Okay, good evening. This is the Sherburne School Committee meeting of October 14th and calling it to order at The first item on the agenda is community comments. Do we have any community comments? Okay, the next item is the CSA updates. Mr. Embry, Mr. Welch.
Good evening. On behalf of the CSA, I'm pleased to report our activities since last meeting. Biggest on our list was the successful Pine Hill 5K. I'd like to thank our sponsors, race directors, and the community at large for an incredibly successful event. We had more registrants than last year, and all said and done, we're looking at about $7,000. So it's, you know, the weather was perfect, we had a great crowd, and everyone had lots of fun. So we're looking forward to continuing that in the future. From a school standpoint, we've kicked off our fall grants, so we're looking to review grant submissions from the teaching staff and decide on awards prior to our November meeting. We're also working with, in conjunction with the police department and the school district to, and any other funding source to, for revised DARE program this year. So it's a very, a lot of parties involved, and we're seeking all sorts of funding to support a new, or changes to the DARE program. And also, on the grant standpoint, I'd like to express our appreciation to the Sherborn Business Association and the Sherborn Arts Council for providing the opportunity for us to submit grants as well. So we submitted to both organizations, and we look forward to hopefully some beneficial results in the next couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have the Pine Hill updates. Dr. Brown?
My principal's report is in the folder. If there's anything you'd like me to speak to specifically, I'd be happy to. Part of what we were going to present on tonight, or is that at this point?
No, the assessment report, do you think?
Or PLC terms? That's later.
That, we'll skip that in a few minutes.
Okay. Well, with regard to the principal's report, we are fully staffed. At our last meeting, I mentioned that we had two resignations in educational assistance, and I'm proud to report that we are fully staffed at this point. Our student council members have been elected for the first semester and are taking great leadership in organizing school spirit days, running and coordinating all school meetings, and they have helper jobs every day that they do around the school. Our teachers are gearing up for tomorrow's second early release day that's allocated to working with our literacy coaches. Tomorrow will be specific to our grades three, four, and five educators, who will work on being analytical about assessment and continue to employ teaching strategies in the classrooms. And that's, we're sending a team of folks a week and a half from now to mask you the annual technology conference, to gather an assortment of new and improved instructional practices being used in classrooms around the state, and we look forward to bringing those back to the hill and sharing them across all of our colleagues.
Any other questions, Dr. Brown? Mr. Bliss, if you could have the sent to office report.
Sure. Thank you kindly, Mr. Hess. Members of the Sherburne School Committee, good evening. Just thought of when we begin, I received a wonderful note from, of all people, one of our contractors who worked in the school over the summer, and this was from a gentleman who works with Habib and Associates, and who helped us with our window project over the summer. I thought it very important to just recognize that in the course of sending this particular communication, the president of the company indicated and wanted to extend his sincere appreciation to Peter Gimlin. No surprise, of course, we hear his name often and always, and just they remarked at how they've never really worked with, you know, a building foreman who's been so professional, so responsive, and just such a delight with whom to work. So I wanted to make sure I shared that with you and with our viewing audience. Peter is a real treasure on the hill, for sure, and we do our level best to recognize him in all ways possible, as he takes very good care of all of us and all of our kids. So I wanted to make sure I recognized him publicly.
His birthday is this Thursday, if you might.
We'll have to concoct something, Dr. Brown. Let's see what we can come up with.
Just a couple highlights from the report. Very pleased to report that the Sherborn Public Schools, and specifically, of course, Pine Hill, has received the REAP grant again, which is fantastic, in the amount of $37,553. So thank you very much to Dr. Ladue for her continued vigilance in making sure that we're always re-upping that grant whenever it becomes available. It's a little bit, it's a little bit awkward, the funding and the timetable, and you sort of, you renew that on a triennial basis, and so we thank all involved, and that amount will be used, it allows us spending authority actually well into 2016 for that grant, so it's helpful in terms of setting the stage for some of our fiscal '16 conversations around the budget, for sure. We've had this grant in play for several years, since before I began, for sure, and we just make sure we're, we keep re-upping that grant for as long as we can. It's a federally sponsored grant through the Rural Educational Achievement Program, and it was Dr. Davis who originally applied for that years ago, when he was superintendent, so we continue on that. The enrollment report, we'll certainly speak to and take a deep dive into next week when we meet for our joint school committee meeting. We're quite pleased, you have a sort of prelim version of it in your packet. The version we'll have for next week will also, on the reverse side, have several different data points for special education numbers on the backside of the report as well, so that should prove helpful. After the Sherborn School Committee voted last month, its decision to remain with MCAS as our testing platform for this year, the very next morning, we filed that decision with the DESE, so all three of our districts are on record with remaining with MCAS for the school year. Today was a big day in terms of, and over the past few days certainly, with goal setting for the professional growth and evaluation system, so we've been actively engaged in meeting with all educators and all administrators regarding goal setting for this year, and a lot of times that requires us to go back in and revise the goals and ask for sort of a second take, but that's all in the interest of growth and getting these SMART goals, as smart as we can possibly make them, in this, our second year of our professional development evaluation system. I would, I would like to just announce that we also had to revise our annual disclosures notification. That is a publication we put out on the website every August, typically right before school opens, and there's a myriad of elements on that. It includes things from our asbestos management plan, to notification to parents about standardized testing for the school year, to parents' ability to request teacher credentials, all kinds of items, and after the decision was made concerning MCAS, we felt it important to revise the disclosures notification, so that a revised version of that appears on the website. We write one of those for each of our three school districts. In fact, there's one unique teach school, so we actually write, we'll write four of those reports every year. They've all been updated. We'll speak to the wellness committee in just a bit, and the policy subcommittee will come up in just a few minutes as well, and I think business manager Tagle will speak briefly to the bus contract when it comes up for her turn, so that's a brief walkthrough on the state of the schools.
And I wanted to continue, certainly there are some things in my report that you can review, but to just speak a little bit about professional development and how it's aligned with the district goals and the tech plan supplements. So what you'll see for the early release days throughout the year at Pine Hill is to write those reading units of study as aligned to the professional development that educators are doing, and you can see what the other schools are doing too. In addition, we've contracted with Teachers 21 to provide some professional development for our, all of our educators capable to 12 on the December full day. He'll be speaking with us about the culture of learning and using those district determined measures, those assessments, to determine if our students have learned what we thought they had learned. So that's a great thing that's happening, and that I can speak to the next generation science standards in my report below, but anything else that's there that you'd like me to comment on, please don't mistake to ask.
Okay. Any other questions? I see Mrs. Green on here. Is Mrs. Green going to?
Mrs. Green's not here tonight. She's going to join us next week at the joint meeting.
Okay.
Because she predicted there may be some questions about the special ed enrollments system-wide, so it made more sense to plug her in on the.
Goodness, she took an evening off.
She took an evening off. She has an icebox.
I'd like to hear off. Basically, we're reporting out, as far as the first time for fiscal year 2015, we have currently a salary variance of approximately $123,000. That variance is primarily as a result of changes that occur once the budget process is completed, for example, retirements, or lease of absentances, or actually individuals that retire or notify us of departure during the summer months. We're still tweaking the numbers, so I'll continue to monitor that salary variance and report out. Okay. Now I'm confused. As far as the circuit breaker is concerned, I provided the school committee with a chart that basically shows you the calculation that we go through to, and provide to the Department of Ed to get what we would know to be our circuit rate, circuit breaker reimbursement. We've identified all three school districts, and in the case of the Pine Hill, we have less than five students that are eligible. Their total eligible expenses were $185,000. The foundation budget is $124,000. That basically is the amount we have to meet before we get a dime back, and then based on that, we get a net claim and we get reimbursed 72% of that, or $43,000. The region, students that attend the region from Sherborn, the money goes to the region. However, we then cut a check back to the town of Sherborn. It's just a flow-through because their students at the region. In the case of the Sherborn students, there were 25 all told between the two communities, or $1,610,000 in claims and eligible expenses. The foundation at the region for Sherborn was $484,000, for a net claim of $576. Based on a 72% reimbursement, that's $414,000 that will go back to the town of Sherborn. So we combined that for the purposes of the circuit breaker for the town of Sherborn. I've done a little chart below which shows, in effect, how it works in terms of the budgetary process. The total reimbursement for Sherborn is $458,000. The budget reimbursement, the amount for the region, the amount we actually budgeted was $234,000. So the actual versus budget circuit breaker that will flow through is $223,000. Does anyone have any questions at this point on how this works?
So. Greg, do you have a question?
No. I, I do, but I think I'm going to get with Chris at some point, just to make sure that I understand it. The year-over-year, or circuit break from one year being applied to this year, my, I guess my biggest, my overall comment is, because things come and go, and the numbers are so large, I think it's important for us, and especially the audience and other budget makers, to understand where, all of a sudden, we think we're way ahead of the game, and then things happen very quickly, and we're, we're back to even, or we're behind again, to just, to just know how quickly things can change and see that illustrate.
So we receive, and I'm just thinking, Chris, we do receive from, for instance, the out-of-district coordinator periodic updates on whether we're under or over budget, over projections. I mean, that might be helpful for us to begin to report out. It'd be easy enough to do that.
For me, it's not every month.
No, no.
But just like a summary at the end of the year to see where we went, and if, and if things are even, it looked like we budgeted a million-two, and it came out to a million-two. But as we know, you know, in November, we thought we were, you know, 200 grand ahead of the game, but then stuff happened, and we're back to even again. So if you just see it's all, that it's all even, you don't know how big those swings are, and they can work against you pretty quickly, so.
Well, I think in my, my report, I actually did.
This is excellent, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you. I did an analysis of where we stand currently with the out-of-district tuition and transportation. Currently, we have about $143,000 positive variance excluding any additional reimbursement for circuit breaker. That's just budget, where we're at, actual. And that primarily as a result of a, we had, we had, we have had some students leave the district. That's what's generating that positive variance. Now, that can change in a heartbeat. We could have someone come in, or we could have a placement, an IEP, that requires additional services, and I think that's what you're referring to, correct?
I thought this discussion was, was very, very good. It made, it made a lot of sense, and to have that, if things don't change, it's fine, you don't need anything, but towards the end of the year, to sort of have a summary of where it went would be, would be my, my preference. I thought this was great.
I had one question. In the lower left-hand corner of that circuit breaker thing, where it says there's $223,000, which is what we see beyond what we had budgeted.
Correct.
So that if we had new students come in from out of town, would that be available to be used?
Yes.
Okay, and if it doesn't, does it go back to the town at the end of the year?
That's correct.
Okay, and so, so that's why at the end of the year, sometimes you will see a large return from the school department, not because, you know, it wasn't budgeted correctly, it's just that the difference between what we might get from the state and what we actually get from the state was different, so in which case, that helps to build up the town's free cash, actually.
That's exactly what happens.
It's only available for the current year. It's not available, because we have all talked about, why can't we keep that money around to, to cushion the blow later on, but I guess by.
It's, by law, we can keep that money for two years.
For two years?
Yes. That was changed two years ago. However, that's a policy decision, I think, that the town and school committee would have to work out.
Okay. Thank you. So that number, Mr. Hess, can fluctuate based on student cases and, as you alluded to, the percentage reimbursement. So if all of a sudden, in this, in fiscal '15, the state were to reimburse circuit breaker at $75,000, then obviously, we would see an uptick over what we had anticipated. So the number can be driven up or down by both the reimbursement percentage, which is always sort of at play, unfortunately, and obviously by the volatility of student cases.
And that money's only applicable to, to out-of-district?
No. If you have an in-district student that does meet the foundation, anything over that is reimbursed.
Right, but when you have this excess in the, the circuit breaker reimbursement fund, and then you have new costs that come in, so you have a student that comes into the system, but they need, they need assistance in the school, can that money be applied?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And we, we have had cases in the past where students have remained in district, so typically the, around this vernacular around circuit breaker, people instinctually think out-of-district. Maybe not the case, right? You could have students who receive services in district, be it at Pine Hill, or at the middle school, or at the high school, who are from Sherborn, who are, in fact, circuit breaker eligible, based on the circumstances, and that money would remain locally to offset the costs. So you could have to hire a special teacher, or have all kinds of wraparound services in place for a student, not to suggest we have, or to cite a particular case, but theoretically could happen, and that, that student could be circuit breaker, or that case could be circuit breaker reimbursable.
Thank you.
Okay, so are we looking, then, to budget at a, like a 50% return? What do we?
I would recommend strongly, because that reimbursement percent is really subject to legislative approval every, each and every year. Not only that, if you recall, we reduced the amount of out-of-district by almost a quarter of a million dollars in the FY '15 budget. Okay? That means that's less money we're going to get back in circuit breaker, because you no longer have those cases that could meet the eligible circuit breaker above and beyond foundation. I would strongly recommend, even the 40%, I think is a risk. The town of Sherborn is primarily the only one that does it this way.
Okay, thank you. And did you have a recap on the past capital items?
Yes. Speaking of which, we have three bills that I'd also like to discuss at this time. One is the window shades for the window project. If you recall, that, there's an analysis in here. Nothing really has changed since the last update that's been provided to school committee. The only remaining project left for FY '15 at this point is the insulation project, and we can get into that later, but relating to the window project, the cost estimate did not contain any amount for window shades, and we received a bill for $6,500, and there is no money left unless we wanted to take it from the remaining money that exists for the insulation project, which I don't think is a good idea. We also have, one of the, the eight classrooms, there was a request for fire retardant rugs. If you recall, we put, we put in tile flooring, took out the old rugs. It is cold, the children do have reading circles, I think it would be helpful for them not to sit on cold tile. The cost of those rugs would be $22, $2,200. And the last bill, we have, actually don't have this last bill, but we're requesting, we move forward with the security enhancements at the Pine Hill, and that's a total of $4,950. We're recommending that the school committee consider taking the total of some 13, $14,000 out of the rental income revolving fund to pay these.
So would you do that?
No, that was last.
So we haven't really, we haven't voted, we haven't asked the school committee to vote our release of the $14,000 to cover those three bills, and just by way of, just a little bit of reminder, both Tech and Accept pay us the $7,000 per collaborative, so there's $14,000 flowing into that account this year, and in meeting with Mr. Crusoe at the time, more than a year ago, I would gather, the suggestion was that those funds from the rental flow exactly into the building rental account, to be used at the discretion of the Sherborn School Committee for exactly this type of thing, incidental expenses that come up, so this seems a logical outlet for that.
Or physical improvements.
Correct. Things that, you know, sort of fall in that limbo land between what we can afford, yet it's not capital, so these things happen to fall into that category.
How much is in that fund normally? So there's an additional $14,000 in there, and there's normally?
It varies, but it can range anywhere from, because it's a cumulative balance, we generally, before the rental fee income, we book about $10,000 a year.
So we would need a motion for $14,000 to be expended from the, the building rental fund?
Correct. Or 13,905. We'll cover it.
Okay.
Do we say specifically for window shades, classroom area rugs, and security enhancements?
That would be helpful.
Okay. Do you want to make the motion?
Yeah. Yeah, second.
Any discussion here? Okay, all is in favor? Okay, unanimous?
So that's it, concerning the FY '15 update. There's also a timeline for the state budget process, that's very tentative, as well as the transportation RFP that we need to do. As the committee may not be aware, the contract is up at the end of this fiscal year, so we have to go out to bid. I can tell you right now, I'm already behind on meeting that October 17th deadline.
Would you have to notify them by October 17th?
We actually have to put an RFP together that's this deck.
And it has to be out by that date?
Well, in order to meet all the other dates, because it's a public bid process.
Oh, okay.
So I'm, do my best, if Steve lets me work from home.
I know, huh? One of the things that, well, well, excuse me, one of the things we'll share on that, it's an interesting ripple for the transportation contract, is that our school start times committee is actively meeting. We have our second whole group meeting tomorrow. It's a committee of about 20 people, including parents, school committee members, students, you name it. Excuse me, and it's a great committee, and the committee is subdivided into three work groups, and their individual work groups have already independently met as well, so tomorrow is our next meeting. Each work group is expected to do a sharing of what their learnings have been thus far, sort of a survey development group, we have a research group, and, you know, that are working on different, different aspects of this. So one of the things that's a little bit confounding to us on this is to put an RFP together that could theoretically contemplate a change, even though it hasn't even, it's so embryonic at this stage, so it is interesting how we'll sort of sculpt that, and that's what we need to put our heads together on. I mean, we can put something together based on the way we do business today, and based on projected enrollments for next year, but, excuse me, if there were any kind of a move to, for instance, change the secondary schools to begin a bit later, that obviously, obviously impacts your RFP.
So actually, as long as it's structured so that each bus can be used twice, then it really shouldn't impact the total amount, shouldn't too much?
Correct, but, you know, one, one thinking was, could there ever be a situation, even futuristically perhaps, where if the schools ever did start in a time pattern that was similar between the secondary and elementary schools, and if the enrollment suggested that would allow for it, could students be on one bus? Could there be a bus route that would drop off, kind of like we do with our Boston bus? We have all of our Boston students on one school bus, and it drops off at each school, and drops off at the region, and, and it's, it's radical to think that that could be the case, but, and particularly right now, the region is so loaded, the buses are really filled, the enrollment, we sit at 1,181, the region.
So you have a lot more buses, but just one run?
Theoretically.
In theory.
And given the, given the demographics of the community, that's what's difficult. I mean, it's not like an urban, you know, where it's condensed. To get from one side to the other side of Sherborn is very lengthy, so that all has to be examined.
Right, and not only that, but time-wise, I mean, I know they say it's around 30 minutes is an average run, but I think, I know at least last year, some of them were running 45 minutes, because I know some stops, six kids might get on, another one, though, only one child gets on, and there's no sidewalks, so you have to take 30 to 45 seconds at least to load a child. Has to get on, walk down the length of the bus, sit down, before you can start to leave, and so you pick up 20 kids, and you're talking a lot of time, and you're not even talking about travel time, so that's one thing you have to look at, too, by dropping off at the elementary and going to the high school, is time.
And you're going to do this in the next three days?
We're going to have to clear time to, to put the bones of this together.
And why does it have to be done by, this says December award of contract, why?
Well, it's interesting, because I, I looked back the last time, we didn't bid this until March, even though the budget was impacted. If the committee wished to give us a little bit more time, we could put an estimate in there, I believe, on what we think, and then adjust the estimate down, but that's the best we can do. I mean, in order to get the budget in line.
Okay, I see what you mean, yeah.
And that may be ultimately what we need, the, the fact of the matter is that this is a, the school start times committee is a very, very thoughtful group that's taking this job very seriously, and I think they won't want to pay this, their homework, their work, short shrift, and I think if we burden them with the sense that there's a stop clock running, and they have to do something, propose it, run it by, clear it by three school committees, that there could be really, I just don't see that realistically happening in the next, you know, two months, which is sort of what the, it would seem unrealistic.
Is there any way, I mean, I don't know what kind of relationship you have with the bus companies, where you could kind of give them a couple scenarios of what-ifs, and see if they could sort of give you some guidelines, oh, it's going to be way more expensive, or, you know, change, or, I mean, just to get some idea?
I've already reached out, and I can tell you this, we are probably one of the lowest per bus runs.
In metro.
In this, in this area. In this, in this area. So I think we will see an increase. Without saying who the vendor was, I can tell you this, our current vendor has been extremely sensitive in working with us. If you recall, when we had the kindergarten go full-time, that contract didn't require him to renegotiate, and he did. So, so I am reaching out, so I can get a pretty good idea, I believe.
And just factually speaking, the last few times we've gone out for bid, there's been one, you know, bid for the transportation contract, so it's, it's an interesting industry. But we did look at the comp rates recently, and we have the lowest per bus run in metro Austin.
Lowest number of kids per bus, or lowest price per bus?
Cost per bus.
Cost per bus or cost per student?
Cost per bus.
Cost per bus.
Well, so, is it because we have fewer kids on the list?
Right.
Which makes sense. No, it seems to me, though, it's unrealistic that it would change next year, the schedule's not going to change for next year. It seems still unrealistic, really, that it would change the following year. So it would just be for the third year, potentially, the contract. So I would think that we could at least, for next year's budget, assume that it will be whatever the increase is, but that it's not going to be something radically, radically changed to us' schedule. Correct?
Sure, I mean, given that tomorrow's just the, the whole, the whole school start times committee's second meeting, I, I think they realize that, too, because they're very, they're a great group. And that was one of the first questions, was are there any compelling or competing deadlines that, that pressurize our work, you know? And I said, well, we're going out to bid, you know, for the, they seem very serious about looking at the feasibility of this and getting the work done, whether it's a yay or a nay, whether they really choose to advance something or not, remains to be seen. But I don't think ultimately it would be anything too drastic, actually, would be my, Mr. Hook sits on the committee.
Having the topic enough to answer that question, because I don't know, I don't think we've gone down the road far enough, literally, with any of that to make any decisions there. But would it be possible to look at the bus contract as a one-year for just this one, because we know there might be a change going forward?
I think, especially with only having one bidder in the last few years, it's going to be difficult, because they, typically, they're investing quite a bit of capital upfront for these buses, we don't buy the buses. So I think doing a one-year contract, you could see a substantial increase just for that one year, because they purchased these buses, assuming they're amortizing them over a five-year or three-year lifecycle for the per.
So we'll, we'll continue to do our, our work on this. I mean, the good news is we have a great relationship with our bus contractor, all around. I mean, administration, administration of the building seems to be, you know, enamored of the group, so.
Okay, I think, next we have our, our capital for the upcoming year. And just like your house, the more we look at what needs to be done in the school, the more we see what needs to be done in school. And it's ever-changing, and as we learn more facts, things change. Do you have any new information for us, Mr. Hook?
Sure. So just by way of a little bit of background, I mean, for those people, Mr. Garland and Mr. Hess sit on the committee, and certainly, and Ms. Tagg. In the current fiscal year, we had asked for and received an appropriation for insulation, was the, the topic of the project, and it was an appropriation for thirty-three thousand and fifty-six dollars. Our Pine Hill Capital Building Committee is really a pretty incredible group. We meet pretty faithfully, it's a large group with some industry leaders present on, on the group, on the committee. And the more we looked at it, the, this insulation project was originally anticipated to put in insulation above some of the corridors, the, above the hallways. And the more we began to kind of peel back the, the layers, quite literally, when we had a company, there was really, we had a company out called Conservation Services Group, and our committee ultimately decided that we should probably use a few dollars of that thirty-three thousand to really figure out if blowing in insulation above the corridors was really the most energy-efficient thing to do. And ultimately, this, this company came in, they chatted with us, and produced a report indicating that really there's quite a bit more work that has to be done in terms of really properly addressing the insulation issues at Pine Hill. And it, it has caused the committee to, to look at the fiscal sixteen request of another hundred-plus thousand dollars for windows, and to really wonder and to contemplate whether that money is better spent, and in order to quantify it, we need to do some more homework on it, but whether the most energy-conscious effort and the best bang for our buck would really be spent on doing the insulation work and the work underneath the roof. Essentially, we have cold air that's rushing through the soffits on either end of, of the building, and it's, we just experience enormous energy loss. And we feel as if, as a committee, that it would be more prudent to slow this down a little bit, do a little more homework on what it would really take to address, to better insulate and to better address the envelope issues concerning the building, rather than to necessarily move forward with the final phase of this multi-year window project, certainly from a, from an energy conservation perspective. Mr. Lesser attended our last meeting, we have this company, Retainer, seems to be working very well with us. And Ralph Kelly, this, this company put together the scope of work of what we need to have happen. We now need to take that report, which was received last Thursday at four o'clock or something, we need to get that report into the hands of a couple contractors to find out what the, what the cost would be. So ultimately, maybe then in the fiscal sixteen spreadsheet, that line for windows could be, you know, retitled, and we may put that more for, you know, building envelope insulation work, which would pay a greater return on our investment. But we just can't quantify it for dollars like tonight. I mean, we're just, we're working as quickly as we can on that. Is that accurate, Mr. Hess? Mr. Garland?
Yes. You might add that it's pretty extreme in that you've got heating pipes that freeze if, when it gets cold enough, so it'd be foolish not to, now that we sort of know what's going on, it'd be pretty foolish not to address that as soon as possible.
Right. So there's this huge vacuous area, thrusts of cold air run through, there happens to be pipes that are in that area, that Peter Gimlet has to lift ceiling tiles all over, you know, God's green earth, and, and lift these ceiling tiles to allow heat to get up so the pipes don't freeze in the, in the winter. I mean, just incredible energy loss. So we'd really like to do a little more homework around this and, and figure out what the, the best capital request is.
Right, and some of those cold snaps last year, where he pointed it out, where some things actually stopped flowing, they didn't break, but they actually stopped flowing.
Yes.
It's better to, this coming year, if we get a cold snap, as you say, to have them pop the tiles and let the heat go up to where the pipes are, rather than have them freeze.
So about three hours ago, we were exchanging email, volleying back and forth, Mr. Garland's on that email thread, too, the whole committee. Sean Killian is, is part of that group as well, and just said, you know, it would be very prudent for us to as quickly as we can get this report into the hands of these few contractors, get some estimates going, and then, and Mr. Searle sits on our Pine Hill committee, so very much, he's very much in the loop. But if we could get a little bit of time on that.
Right.
So is the one sixty-three, a, was that a placeholder? Is that why we're using that number?
Well, that was an estimate for the, the next part of the window project, but we might decide that this other project is perhaps more urgent.
Okay.
So we might have to adjust those figures.
We're sort of tied into these numbers, loosely tied into these numbers, that's why we can't do both? In other words, Art must ask for both.
Well, we like to have a fairly even request each year. I mean, you know, the twenty-year report showed that we're going to have to have a certain request each year, but we don't want any big spikes if we, we can help it.
And we will share that the, the region for fiscal fifteen for our current year, the region asked, the request and the granting was for three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and the request at the region for fiscal sixteen is, is closer to half a million in that, in that ballpark, given the scope of six buildings and the whole cadre of things. So in the interest of sensitivity to the request, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And so next, I see we have the wellness stress report.
Sure, so are we down in the presentation discussion section now on the agenda, Mr. Hess?
Yes, we are, because we ended up with the capital items being down there. And then we already did the revolving fund.
But we're not going to have to vote on capital items, so are we, tonight?
No, I, I.
Does approval?
I, we, we were hoping that we would have some solidified, now we just don't, you know, at this point for that. But the other thing that was above, Mr. Hess, was just on the policy group, and Mrs. Hovey sits on the policy subcommittee, we are alive.
Oh, correct, I'm sorry. Right, policy, yeah.
Yeah, and we're, our group is alive and well. All right, Mrs. Hovey?
Woo-hoo!
We meet tomorrow morning, again. We have a whole series of policies that we're looking at, and we'll do a complete walk through tomorrow, but for next week, for the joint school committee meeting, we'll be looking at policies AC, ACA, DBA, GCF, IJJB, JFBB, Policy ADD, NADDAR, and Policy IHBEA. So we'll take a peek at all those next week, happy reading. And so we have a little bit of work to do tomorrow, but we're trying to ramp this up and get this ready for the joints. It makes more sense to load all of this for the joint meeting, where we have all sixteen members together.
Are you expecting to vote on any policy changes at the joint meeting?
I, I think we'll do, we'll ask for a first read on a number of those, I think. Is that accurate, Mrs. Hovey?
Yes, but I think they're only, they are mandated changes, as opposed to anything that there's really, we can ask questions about, but there's no real discussion because they're mandated.
But the fee schedules won't be coming up for a vote?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
A lot of these, we began our work sort of easier, and we looked at some of the things that were required changes by law.
Right.
And then there's one, I think there's only really one new policy to, to really look at, so ultimately. So we meet tomorrow morning, and we'll continue our work.
Okay, so we are, are we on to, we have wellness in two places here. Is there anything else to report on, on the wellness committee?
No, just that challenge success group returned from Stanford, and Jill Fidor, I'll remind the committee, is our representative from Pine Hill. She joins Councilor Cynthia Shapiro from Chikering as our two elementary reps. The group met last week and meets again on October the twenty-second to define some action steps that are their, their derivatives from the trip to California. So we'll have more to report out on that as well, but we're trying to give them a little bit, they just got back last, you know, it was last weekend or something. So we look forward to, to their report as well. And on, let me think, the, so we did the policy, stress and anxiety, and then I included very early this morning, I put in the Google Drive, their Advocate report, which is from our, the food service company that we hired, you know, Advocate is the company hired to look at our food service operation. That report is a PDF in the school committee resources Google Drive, and it's also been provided to all thirty-seven members by extension of our wellness committee, tons and tons of people. So lots of eyes on the document, and at next week's joint meeting, we're putting the finishing touches between all three of us, working with Janelle Madden, on a state of the school's food service report that sort of takes the, the big message from the Advocate report and puts it into a couple, I think about three or four goals for this.
These were action-type items?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so next we have the generation science standards?
Yes, I wanted to provide an update, as that's part of the district goals of the next generation science standards. Just to, just by way of background, the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, at the same time the nation was reviewing, the science standards was reviewing their Massachusetts standards. There's two documents out there, I mean, the Mass DESE standards and the next generation science standards. The, the shift in these science standards is for K to eight, it's an integration of the four components, earth, physical, life, engineering, and technology. So they'll integrate those four content areas, K to eight. The difference between the next generation science standards and the Massachusetts standards is the next generation science standards wanted to continue that integration through high school. Massachusetts has said, no, let's keep it physics, bio, chem. So that's the difference. During this school year, we are still under review for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. On the DESE website, I don't see a date on when the state will then vote whether they'll take the Massachusetts draft science standards or the next generation science standards. So that's, you know, it's still up in the air. But a focus on what they call practice standards, using models, investigating, conceptual connections, and that integrated instruction. So right now, we're in a holding pattern. But to understand, when you compare the two, the K to five standards for the Massachusetts draft and the next generation science standards are almost the same. So we're, and then we're, we're working at our middle school level to think about what happens this day when we integrate all of those things. So the science standards are still up in the air. The MCAS will still remain, grades five, eight, and end-of-the-year high school, will have to revise it according to those new standards. But that's where we are, we're still in that holding pattern with some great thought. There's a, a science curriculum leader here at Pine Hill, Jatora Lundquist, who we've had conversations with about, so when can we get our hands on all this? Really just a holding.
Would any of these decisions require additional training or materials?
Yes. Yes, because of the integrated nature, it's not as much of an impact at Pine Hill, but any shifts for content might require professional development. And I don't have, I don't really know the impact yet of materials at the Pine Hill level.
All right, any questions here?
And you'll recall, even when we discussed PARK several times, there was no STE, no Science, Technology, and Engineering, PARK assessment, that was still to be grounded in the MCAS platform. Okay.
So, so sorry, so then the, the new standard, whichever one they choose to adopt for the middle school, which I guess we still need to know at the elementary school, because that will inform the middle school curriculum.
Exactly.
Would they then be, remain MCAS, even if we go PARK, but they could go next, but that would still be MCAS, even though with their PARK? It seems awfully confusing.
Loose.
Yeah, lots of different platforms.
I don't, I don't honestly believe that PARK will eventually develop in the next few years a science assessment, given the rigor with which they had to develop the ELA and MAF. And if Massachusetts adopts their standards, we would have to think about how they match, and if it would match a PARK at science. So for now, Massachusetts is saying we'll stick with the MCAS for science five, eight in the high school.
Whether or not a district goes with PARK or not.
Right.
And even, so then even if the state statewide says, we want to go PARK, which I guess they said would be decided next September.
Right.
At that point, they could decide PARK, but then still maintain an MCAS in science?
Yes, that's.
So there'd be two different testing.
Yes.
Types.
Yes.
That was always the way it was going to.
And considering, and considering it took a multi-year platform to develop the PARK, I mean, it would, that's almost a, a sure thing. I mean, if, if they were to go to PARK, we'll definitely have two platforms.
I understand, that just.
Conceptually.
Yeah.
And assessment, windows, two different assessment.
Yeah.
Very good. So next we have our assessment report, Mr. McGordy?
Sure, thank you. So we are.
Oh, sorry, may I preface by saying, we took the liberty of inviting Robin Mansfield to join us this evening. Robin is employed as a special education teacher at Pine Hill School, and serves as the math curriculum leader to support administration and teachers and students.
For math wizard.
I'm going to go be the button pusher.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, grabbing that. So our, our scores.
Go, 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 go to hand.
Thank you. Mr. McGordy, I don't know if you want. Sure. You guys took one of these off the bus last week. The other way. Thanks. Beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so two notable things that stand out is, we're going to start out, it starts out with the ELA scores, grade three, grade four, then five. There were just a few minor changes up and down each grade, but grade four had a substantial rise in ELA, but they also had a decline in math, so we'll talk to that later, but this is, we'll go over them all here. So here's the grade ELA scores, and as you can see, it, it shows you the, the four years, the last four years, and fourteen is where we are now. So advanced and proficient, eighty-seven percent combined, that was about the same as the cohort from the year before. It's hard to compare, because cohorts are different group of students, so it's, there's always going to be changes for that reason as well. So if you want, we'll move on to grade four ELA. This is, I mentioned. This is, I mentioned, this number here, the two numbers combined, advanced and proficient in fourth grade ELA, it went up nine points this year, which was a, you know, substantial And fifth grade, if you see year to year, there's some, you know, changes, like maybe the advanced went up a little, proficient went down a little bit, it pretty much, kids for the most part stayed in a good place.
One of the things that I'm noticing in all these three charts is that that 2013 to 2014 needs improvement has been dropping each of those years.
It is.
So that has to be going into the advanced and proficient categories, which is always a good sign.
Yeah, and you want, and obviously, in, when we see over here, we, we don't want to see anyone over there, but if, if there is, that's, those are, we make sure that if there's some students that need some support in these areas, we make sure they get it, or perhaps it is two days out of 181 days each test, so perhaps, you know, they had a bad day. So we look at that too, to see what the reason is for, if someone has a slip up there. And this compares to.
I'm sorry, on the, the last slide, in fact, all these, do we have a sense of the students who are in warning category, are they, were they right on the cusp of needs improvement warning?
You know, I looked at that, but what I, what I looked at, like a 240 is, is proficient. There were a good chunk of students that had a 238, but to say the same thing, there also may have been students that were two points away from another, so I, I really didn't want to go there because I didn't want to cherry pick too much.
Yep.
But, but it is true, it's a matter of a couple of points, you're in the next category. So here's a comparison, if you'll see, what we did, we took the year's score for the combined advanced and proficient, and then we took the last three years and took the average. So this year, grade three was just right about at the average, as I showed you, grade four took a little jump over the average, and grade five went up over the three-year average. That was a good increase for them. There he is, grade three mathematics. One thing I want to mention also is, this was the first year fully that the testing comprised of the 2011 standards. So there was some, we'll talk in a moment about some curriculum changes that we put into place in order to prepare for that. The few years before that, it was sort of a combination, as they were sort of melding it in, preparing for the change, but this administration year was fully based on the 2011 frameworks. Yeah, thanks, Dr. Brown, I think we're good. So here's the grade four I mentioned, if you notice, it's, it's pretty flat across the three categories here, which is, you know.
For 2014.
For 2014, correct. You know, it was surprising to staff, you know, you know, they did their due diligence, they supported the students. We're not really sure why, we looked into some reasons we can talk to in a moment, and Ms. Mansfield can speak to some of the curriculum changes put in place to prepare for this. So we'll go on to grade five, I mean, we do have grade five, sorry. As you see, this is a little more up here, down a little bit there, but not really a huge shift either way.
And in full disclosure, this grade five cohort was a notably strong cohort all the way through from third, fourth, and fifth grade with regard to math.
So we're here again, is, and here's, see how much that is below the three-year average? So that's something that we're, we want to, you know, make sure we have all our, you know, i's dotted and t's crossed.
But it is interesting that with all of the schools that are measuring themselves with, or looking at is for data points, they all seem to drop between three and four. Is there something?
There's generally a huge, there's a hu, go ahead, I'm sorry. Y'all, let me.
The degree of difficulty of the, of the tests going from grade three to grade four is, it's substantial. The fourth and fifth grade exams are very, very similar. You could say that maybe some of the kids, when they're in fourth grade, they're not up to taking or rising to the occasion of the degree of difficulty. I'll tell you guys a funny story, when Phil Baniels was here, one of the first things he said to me was, you know, our fourth grade math isn't cutting it, and like, that's like the worst thing you could say to me, and so I literally went, and I love crunching numbers, so, you know, I went and looked at, like, all of these towns just to prove to him that you look across the state and the number of kids that are both advanced and proficient in grade three and then in grade four dropped substantially. That being said, we've never had it flatlined like, like what you see or what you saw there, where there would be a third, a third, and a third. Excuse me, in all the years that I've been at Pine Hill, that it's, it's, it's never looked like that. So, you know, it definitely was something that, you know, I think Barbara saw me in the summertime, right as the MCAS data first came out, I was at, I was at Pine Hill.
Within an hour of the state opening their portal, I might add.
So, so, you know, it was definitely something that, you know, in terms of, that I saw was somewhat of a, a little red flag because it, it had not happened. But typically, it, it does go down, and then once again, you can see that, you know, by the time the kids are in fifth grade, that the, the number of kids that are advanced and proficient, once again, does rise.
I went online and took a look at the, the state averages, going back like to 2009, and what's quite amazing is that on almost all of them, the fourth grade dropped down between, the only thing is that usually, that's the average, usually we beat the average, and this time we did not.
Right.
Because usually ours would be more, more level, but the state in general does drop down in that fourth grade for math.
Third grader are basic math operations, some more complicated operations start being brought to the students for fourth grade. So it, maybe third grade may be more basic computation. As you get to fourth grade, it's more figure out this problem, which operations you have to use, and it, it just becomes more complex for students. And some are developmentally more ready for it than others, and, you know, we try to prepare all of them. But, you know, there is, there is a definite dip. I looked at, to the cohort scores, like you said, the same cohort, you know, in third and fourth grade, for every one of these districts but one, every one of the cohorts from third to fourth grade went down. So that's not unusual from third to fourth.
Greg, you have a question?
Do you look at it by class? I mean, could this be indicative of a teacher and what's being done in a particular class? I mean, you can see the scores of all data.
If I may speak to that.
Sure.
It, it could be, and in this case, it isn't.
Well, I'm not asking that.
Yeah, yeah, well, I would, I would, I would share, share more.
No, we, we miss not to look at that, but.
We can assess a student, a teacher's cohort and their differential from the state average. And what was interesting is our three classrooms of fourth grade students last year had roughly the same percentage of children.
Fairly balanced.
Excel versus, versus struggle a little bit.
Correct. So there wasn't one here, and two here, and one, 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 they were pretty much in the same place.
Frank, you have a question?
We have talked, I don't remember exactly when I was, towards the end of last year, closer to the end of last year, where we were talking about some of the programs that we needed to implement in the goals for Pine Hill, and we were talking about the new programs for English and so on, where this has maybe pointed out to us that we should be looking at that for, for math at this point, because if I don't look at just the drop, the change from third to fourth, but if I just look at where Sherburne sits with relation to the other schools, our values could be a little better compared to the other schools that we're comparing ourselves to across the board. You know, even if you take our three-year average of the fourth grade, you know, that number still compared to other schools is, you know, I'd say it can, has room for improvement. And then in kind of all the areas, whether it's third, fourth, or fifth grade, you know, there is probably room for that. So is there some thought to the, the program and the tools that we're using to teach math?
There's constant reflection on the everyday math program that we use as sort of the backbone, if you will, of math instruction. Our grade levels have all done, with Robin's leadership, have done analysis of what aligns with the common core, what exceeds the common core, and what quite frankly needs to be supplemented to give our children better proficiency. So it's fair to say, especially at fourth and fifth grade, that we supplement and in some cases, surplant our everyday math program quite a bit to meet the, to better meet the standards.
I think what's important to note too is that for each of these assessments, we get an item analysis, which you're probably familiar with, and I know Pine Hill has already looked at that. So what areas of mathematics, is it operations, is it certainly number sense, is it problem solving, is it the short answer questions, is it data and statistics, those types of things? So they're, they're getting a better sense of what items in that curriculum may need some review, and certainly job embedded professional development through the professional conversations you have.
And pacing, quite frankly, we had a meeting as recently as the tail end of last week. You know, fractions, the fractions unit comes a little bit later in the grade level, you know, in the, in the course of the grade level. It was an area where we didn't score terribly impressive with, with great proficiency, and so there's talk about, you know, how will we adjust our pacing this year to make sure that, you know, we're, making sure that all children are proficient in the math standards before May.
Over the last three years, it hasn't been a whole lot of change.
Yeah.
And yet, you know, there's certainly some room for that.
Greg, so I'm curious what happens to the, like, where's the fourth grade math, the 14 that needs improvement? Does anything happen with those individual kids? I mean, we can say, oh, something's amiss here in, in general, but for those kids, next year, to make sure that they're moving into a proficient, something happens for those individual kids.
Some of those children might receive special education services, some of them might receive RTI intervention. A couple of children that I'm aware of look very proficient on a day-to-day basis, but because of anxiety disorders, don't test well. So it's, it's very individualized, our analysis is very individualized.
And teachers, whatever the topic area is they're teaching, generally they pre-assess, they get an idea of what their students are, teachers make decisions out of group students based on student need on a given topic. So they're, they're, as they're going, they're assessing, you know, John, he needs help with this, and someone else may get started, but then be able to do some of the work more independently, while the teacher will focus on students that need more support.
The way we receive the preliminary data gives us our children's performance midsummer based on just the multiple choice items. So Robin does a great analysis of where kids fall. Later, unlike ELA, later they factor in the writing scores for the short answer responses. And correctly, Robin, by.
14.
14?
That's right.
14 children dropped a level.
Dropped a level this past year. Typically, I went back actually when I, I thought the meeting was at Pine Hill, it's always just been single digits. So what's different about the math is they'll give you just the kid's multiple choice score, and they'll give you an interpretive guide, and they'll say, okay, based on how they did on the multiple choice, this is where they're going to fall. So then when they, the final data comes out, you can actually see, okay, did, did a kid move up or did a kid move down based on the short answer or based on the map open response questions? Typically, and I, I couldn't find my 2011 data, but I went all the way back to 2010, and we've always just had like single digits, so six or seven kids moved down because of their short answer and their math open response scores. This past year, it was, it was 14. That's a lot. So one of the things that we're looking at is what kind of feedback we're giving the kids in terms of their open response questions that hopefully the teachers are assigning on a weekly basis. What type of instruction are we doing in terms of whether, you know, a lot of the open response questions, one of the strategies that we like to, to talk about is extending its table. So just sort of talking about some more problem-solving strategies and, and doing that kind of like whole class, and then working in small groups with kids. So I'm actually on the fourth grade cluster, so this was one of the things that Frank was talking about, we actually did have a meeting last week in terms of, you know, how can we sort of give some feedback and make, and show kids examples? This is what a four looks like, you know? You're assuming that they know what, what a good math open response question looks like, you know, what it needs. So, you know, we've talked about different ways that maybe we can look at our math open response curriculum, because to be honest, I, I think that's a lot for 14 kids to move down based on their open response and short answer score. And, you know, as I said, it's, it's never been double digit like that, so.
Well, the, the good thing about it was when we had this discussion, we, we mentioned that open response was one of the places where kids were challenged. The teachers were very responsive, they were already willing to share resources, and we talked about having explicit instruction or maybe a shared writing experience, as opposed to once they get them and do them again and again, to, you know, not just the beginning of the year when you get the kids rolling on how to do them, but in the middle of the year, at the end of the year, have the teacher model it and the students participate, so it becomes more of like, we can do this, we can solve these problems, we're good at this, as opposed to, oh, here's another word problem. Not that it's that way, but we want to make it more part of what kids do all the time, and I, I think that will build it up.
And one of the things you'll see in our, in our analysis or next steps, but back to your question about our math program, we're, we're looking pedagogically at what we can do different. So the, the whole group, small group guided practice that we do in reading and writing workshop, we want to apply more consistently in math. So, you know, math isn't just a whole group instruction with kids practicing independently, that there's more guided practice based on skill or strategy, instructional needs of small groups of students, so.
I guess maybe the last thing, just real quick, if there's some, maybe some electronic resources to, to, to help with this, you know, especially when looking at the technology plan that, you know, just in helping practice and making some of this math, you know, kind of enjoyable, as opposed to just always bring the teacher in class.
Yep. And that's one way we're using the mobile devices in classrooms for, for math practice. Science, excellent news.
Here's the science scores, fifth grade, if you'll notice, advanced, 68%, proficient, 21%. So that obviously is a huge leap. I, I think it's a lot to do with the fact it's on, we're on a seven-acre campus, science is embedded in every grade all the way through at Pine Hill, and I think by the kids, by the time the kids get there with Broadmoor, with the environment around them, with looking birds out the window in third grade and writing about them, they're able to do very well on the, on the science.
And I'd like to suggest that the significant increase with regard to teachers' mindfulness to incorporate more nonfiction in reading and writing per the common core is, I, I hope this is sustainable because of that.
And then next slide, you'll see, like as you said, where's the little, the math was, you know, not where we'd love it to be. I mean, I think there's not any place we'd rather be than there right now in science, so that's, that's a real positive for this.
So the nice, do you, I, there's a change now, so it's not Broadmoor all the way through, it's another program, or it's every other year, there's something that's changing?
Our CSA has historically funded three naturalist experiences for grade level through Broadmoor. This year, we opted not to use Broadmoor for our fifth grade naturalist experience. We're going to do ponding at Hill Reservation. We think it will be more dynamic and more hands-on.
Where are you pointing to?
Hill Reservation in Dover and Westwood.
The reason, the reason I ask is because Frank just mentioned so many of the Broadmoor things, that it enhanced the performance on the science MCAS, and I was just wondering, you see that this change, then you think will actually further improve, potentially?
Our, the feedback we received from fifth grade teachers was that we were excited to try a different venue with more, our children will be in the water collecting pond specimens, just opportunities they didn't have at Broadmoor because of the facility and the staffing, et cetera, so.
I didn't mean to infer that, you know, it was Broadmoor, I meant science experiences. So.
I mean, I get that. I get that.
No, and I get that. Thank you.
So here's literacy action plan, the finalized reading units of study. I mean, I know you can read, so I don't have to read all this. Let's see. In the other piece is the, the writing, just what everyone really worked on opinion writing last year, we're going to do the other two areas as well and have those ready to roll by the end of the year to have. of the year to have, we're going to do Aspen.
And implement on-demand writing assessments, which are different from common assessments, so that our children are having more opportunity to reflect on criteria for success.
Math action plan, some of this speaks to, you know, some of the challenges that these teachers are going to face, and so we'll try to support them to meet the needs of all their students. And bottom mentions more about explicit instruction to really support the children to beef up their ability to explain their thinking in mathematical problem solving. The real challenge is in mathematics, people think it's math writing. What it really is, is the hugest part of math is to deconstruct the problem first, determine what it's asking, then decide which operations to use, and then to make sure you answer all the questions. So it's really a multi-step process that we have to develop children's, you know, skills and abilities to do that. And this is what Dr. Laduke referred to. I, you know, you mentioned the other standards, but really, they've delayed again, you know, so we really don't know where they're going to go as far as that goes. And then again, increase the nonfiction. So it's probably about a fifty-fifty balance between fiction and nonfiction.
Five, one, three, three.
Yep.
So going back to the math one, would you consider adding to that action item plan, looking at like a different curricular, curricular, now it's a curricular, curricular program, evaluating the curriculum and different types of curriculum programs, seeing what some of the other schools are using that are scoring in those higher levels. Where you made a curriculum change by changing the type of reading as top science, and what are there tangible changes to the curriculum you need to help with the math as...
We certainly always...
As a bullet item on that action plan?
We certainly, I'm different to the leadership. We've worked hard to be aligned with the Chicaring School with regard to our math program, and have put tremendous resources into adopting the Common Core, Everyday Math. I certainly envision us always doing inquiry around the quality of programs out there. But I, I don't, I don't perceive that any of us think it's, that there's a program that's better suited for us than Everyday Math.
Well, there's no real silver bullet. Almost every, many districts confuse a book with a curriculum. A book is maybe tools you may take out of the curriculum, and that's what we really try to do. We try to take out of the Everyday Math what would be beneficial to meet the curricular needs of the children. But then we support it with other materials as well.
Yeah, and then, and actually, the addition that we have right now with Everyday Math, it says Common Core, and it actually, you know, they pushed that out real quick when the initial Common Core frameworks came out. So they might have added some pictographs, so if you go through a student journal, you'll see twenty-three A, page twenty-three A, page twenty-three B. So they added things, but they didn't take things out. And one of the things, when this data first came out, and we realized that some of it was fractions, which come later in the units, and it could have been a pacing issue that Pam Ritchie and I worked this summer and really went through, and Rachel Krieh and I had done this a few years back when we kind of had a blip in the system for the fifth grade. Because, you know, we test them in May, but we still have a month of school left to go. So you're really kind of under the gun to make sure that you, you know, cover everything that the students, you know, hopefully are going to see, you know, on these two or three days. So Pam Ritchie and I looked, and we developed something that's similar to the table of contents that we have for fifth grade. So we currently have that right now for fourth grade. It's been presented to the teachers. Some of the things that are now sixth grade standards, or they're not even taught till seventh grade, you know, the teachers are told, you know, if you've got a student that's shown you on a pre-test that they already know whatever it is you're teaching, these are good lessons to, you know, use as enrichment, but, you know, they're not something that you should be doing at the expense of the stuff that is part of whatever the grade level curriculum is. So we took a pretty close look at that. So we're hoping that the pacing and where we get to this year will be a little different. The other thing, too, to know is that some of the questions that we did percentage-wise worse on, it's in geometry, and that's the first unit that we do in fourth grade. So we've also talked about how can we sort of pull in some of the stuff that the kids learned at the beginning of the year, whether it be in a Type II kind of writing before school, you know, talking about, you know, it's very heavy vocabulary, perpendicular, parallel, you know, a parallelogram, being able to describe the properties of, you know, a rhombus or something like that. So it's, you know, it's things that might have, they might have seen at the beginning of the year that, you know, now we know, hey, we got to review that, you know, continue to review it and make it a spiral part of the math curriculum, and maybe pick some math open responses that, you know, have to do with geometry in marching.
One of the masteries...
Keep your skills fresh.
Mastering that our students assessed most proficient in is algebra. And it's no coincidence, Robin co-teaches with every fourth grade teacher once a week around hands-on equations. So, again, an example of something that we teach throughout the year as opposed to, you know, in this six-week segment. And theoretically, our math program and our math curriculum does revisit and spiral, but certainly not with proportionate attention.
And just so you guys know, Rachel Krieh and I meet with Erin Newman, who's the head of the math department at the middle school, along with the sixth grade math teachers. So we're always asking, you know, how do the Sherborne kids come to the middle school? Is there something that they're not doing that you, you know, that you need us to teach them? And, you know, up until this point, the, it's been a positive flow of communication. So, you know, we meet every, I don't know, June or Chicaring people come over as well. So we're constantly talking about, you know, how are the kids looking different? You know, what did they learn different? Because you now adopted the Common Core, how does this cohort of kids coming into sixth grade look different than, you know, when Lila came in? And so, you know, so we have a very, I feel, a very good working relationship with the teachers at the middle school, and we're always looking at, you know, our students in terms of their math ability and, you know, what can we do better?
And Robin, you were introduced as a special educator, but it's, I think, abundantly evident that you're so much more.
Very.
And at Pine Hill, you certainly work with all teachers. I mean, your name is all over the place and all over the fabric of the school. So thank you for working with all kids. It's important.
And for being, and for being out late on a school night.
You know, I get there early by what parking space I get. With that, I can't, can I?
Yeah. You're just... Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just in the morning.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have the technology plan supplement. It's an eleven-page document. Mr. Wist, do you have any Cliff Notes on those?
Yeah. So at the last, at our last meeting, boy, you really call me out on everything you have to say. At our last meeting, I believe it was Mrs. Hovey who asked in particular for an addendum to be added for technology availability by grade level. She thought that was something that was very important, so we were pleased to put that together. Dr. Laduke, together with Mr. Rataco, put that together. And, Dr. Laduke?
Yes, and in addition, we put in some measurable benchmarks for some of the action steps that you'll see throughout this current year in 2015, 2016, basing this on students' acquisition of some knowledge, creativity, communication, collaboration, and communication. So the five C's, so it's all incorporated in there. You see a focus on students. What is it students should know and be able to do by grade level? And those projects that will assess how those students know those things, looking at the role of the librarian and the technology integrator, to think about what are, in addition to what the classroom teacher does for that integration. I wasn't paying attention. Thank you, Mr. ... And to continue to list some of the software programs that are used, you'll see that on pages four and five, to increase the capacity of educators to integrate technology. The 2015-2016 school year looks at how do we sustain these initiatives? How do we measure student growth with those identified projects and those assessments? So you can see some of the shifts based on your feedback from the previous session. Dr. Brown, anything to add?
I just want to add that under the leadership of Dr. Laduke, we are working cross-district Chicaring and Pine Hill schools beginning in early November to pull together teacher reps from each grade level team, as well as our media and library specialists and school administrators, excuse me, to really solidify and nail down those common experiences, what will every, children at each grade level know and be able to do, and how will we assure that classroom teachers own that tech integration experience that enhances what we determine is essential for K through five.
And I see that the budget implications for 15-16 are just $2,000 more than present year, thirty-nine versus about $37,000. Now, would this lead us on the path to be able to do PARC online? Should that be the case?
Yes, I, we actually gone through sort of a readiness exercise, just in case, and Anthony Rataco had confirmed that we would have been able to, to in fact, you know, exercise PARC, because your testing window is much broad, much more broad. So you're not subject to a particular, you know, testing window as well. So not only from device, but also scheduling calendar as well.
And do they, the grades test on different days, so you could concentrate your materials on a particular grade level?
Different classes within those grades can test on different days.
Okay. All right. And speaking of people who do so much more than what their title really is, Mrs. Ryan is in the audience.
She's using...
So we're...
Honing technology.
See, she's the quintessential multitasker.
I was trying to pull the tech plan up on Drive, which, you know, I might hold and make you crazy.
So Mrs. Ryan is just phenomenal. Obviously, is our librarian and media integration specialist and all things wonderful. She's done so much to transform the library as a dynamic instructional space, and I'm sure you're here to answer any questions that the committee may have as well.
Of course. Anytime.
When, if I may add, when Secretary of Education Matthew Malone visited our school last week, he was super excited about the Makerspace Initiative in the, in the school library. He really wanted to stay for hours and play, but he...
I had to keep him on the schedule.
His assistant ushered him along.
And he was fascinated with the balls in Mrs. Lundquist's class as well, right? That the kids sit on, so. That's right. Dr. Matt Malone was out last week. He had called me the day before and said, could you clear three hours or something of your calendar to entertain me for a few hours? So he came out, and he was fixated, absolutely fixated on visiting Pine Hill in particular. We moved through very quickly. He got a kick out of the fact that I had been building his little house. And then we moved very quickly through the middle school and high school, but he was adamant to see Pine Hill. And just, I think a lot of, well, I mean, present company.
There you go.
It, I, I'm not sure. You know, I mean, because we're great, and great things happen under our roof. But certainly, he, absolutely, we did not get to Chicaring. But he said, I've got to get to Sherborne, I have to get to Sherborne. So we made a point of visiting, what, three or four classrooms, including Ms. Sidman's classroom. Mrs. Cindy had no idea who he was, so we had great fun with that. So, yeah, we had a good visit. It was a lot of fun. And then he was tweeting, so he tweeted out a picture from Jatoric Lundquist's classroom. I don't know if you follow his Twitter feed at all, but it was really, it was interesting, right? Dr. Brown?
Working on his Common Core.
Yes.
He was on a yoga ball. Said, I'm working on my Common Core.
That's right. Great line. Bam, bam.
So on this plan, is, we have to approve this?
I have a question before we go to that, please. So, excuse me, so I understand that what the budget implications are for 2014, 2015, and then sort of looking ahead, you've got the 2015, 2016 concept, but will there be the maintenance budget and then the replacement plan in addition to what we currently have? Is this going to increase ultimately the technology budget required? Or do you think that it will subplan enough of the other expenses so it'll end up staying virtually level?
Level funding was the, sort of, the message, where there was recognition, I mean, we've been the recipients of some great generosity from families in Sherborne, as well as through the generosity of the Sherborne School Committee in allowing us to do more of late with our technology monies. So we certainly did not want to keep going back to the well for increase in that way. So Anthony Rataco felt very confident that this ask of $39,000, so this number of $39.160 will literally be imported right into your first draft of the fiscal '16 budget that you'll receive next month. And so there's a direct correlation between, and just like if you go into the '14-'15 budget, you'll see the figure right from this table directly in your, in your budget.
When I arrived to my post two and a half years ago, our technology budget was $17,000 a year, all told. So, thank you for your generosity and support. But we're, I believe the last two years, we've been, increasing mobile devices has been a large priority for us, and we're at a point now where replacement cycles are sort of on the front burner. Not that it's either or, but proportionately, we're trying to balance that out, particularly with our interactive whiteboards, which are quite expensive, and the interactive projectors are, they're, they've aged out all over the building. So a good part of the replacement priority is for the interactive equipment.
Are there any other questions about this plan? Someone wish to move to approve it?
I move to approve the technology as presented for the 2014-'15 and 2015-'16 school years.
Second.
Do you have a discussion? Alls in favor? Opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, so next, we see the facility use fee schedule. So this is just background for the policy?
Not, in part, yes. So we rent interior space both at Pine Hill and at Chicaring for various groups for various reasons. Of course, at the region, there's much broader rental activity that goes on, because we rent any number of our playing fields, et cetera, at the region. There is an effort to have our three school committees look at interior rental charges to determine if there's an appetite to increase for any group, could be for a resident group or non-resident group, if there's an appetite to increase any of the rates. The Dover School Committee is taking under advisement the rental of some interior space, and will take a closer look at this at their meeting in November. But we felt like it was important, because you, you don't see this a lot, I don't think, you know, in my time, I can't remember really publishing this. And so we felt like it was important to stamp a current, put this out, maybe it's not a fraction or anything other than sort of just consideration at this point. Where we really see a glaring deficiency is at the region with rental of space, rental of exterior space in particular fields. So it came to our attention with, with the Norah Searle field in particular, the turf field, where we're renting that field for, say, $75 an hour, and the going rate is more in the neighborhood of $250, $300 an hour in any neighboring community. So the regional school committee will actually be calling a special school committee meeting fairly soon, just to literally look at facility rental, facility use, because it's a, it's a more significant part of the operation, as you can imagine, right? In terms of revenue and just complexity. So we put this out there, and one thing we were thinking about before, when we were going through the packet before coming to the meeting tonight, was whether, for instance, the $35 an hour rate for custodial overtime, does that really cut it? You know, was one of the things that sort of stood out to us. So if, if a user group is paying time and a half for, they only pay the fee, if it's, if it's a Sherborne group, for instance, you're only paying that if it really involves calling in a custodian. So it'd be something like on a weekend or Friday night or something like that, or in particular weekend. And we were running numbers to say, does $35 an hour really cut it? You know, when you really think of what a custodian makes at time and a half, it does not leave a lot of room there for any overhead, to be honest with you. So if you have somebody who comes in and rents the gymnasium and is burning lights in the gymnasium, you know, that $35 an hour will cover the cost of the custodian, but it's certainly not... certainly not really doing much to touch the area of the utilities. So, and I know we have the utility rate here, but this hasn't been looked at in some time. And again, there could be absolutely no appetite. It may be that, you know what, it's a great benefit to our community to be able to use Pine Hill School. And we appreciate it, and people pay a lot of taxes, and maybe where we are is where we should be.
Can you differentiate between in-town groups or groups that include people from a wider area?
Sure. And there is, this schedule does sort of contemplate that a bit. It's really more distinguished between for-profit and not-for-profit. But if it's something that maybe the best thing to do would be to take a look at this and read it over, maybe, and then at the next meeting, if you have any thoughts or any more homework you want for administration to do around it, we'd be happy to.
So, if we have questions, we should email Frank, them to Frank, and he can consolidate?
Sure, that'd be great, because we can have, we have somebody at the region who really has compiled, Susan Conley, who's just a wonderful employee at the region, who's done a lot of work for us on this. And she's run comps, and she has a lot of information. So, any questions you have, you can certainly, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, so next, we have the staffing enrollment report. Do you have any packets?
So, kicking off the fiscal 16 budget season, 'tis the season of frights and horrors. So, in this season, we wanted to make sure we included the staffing enrollment report. We revised it as of last Friday. We solidified in the 2014-15 column. So, you'll recall, we solidified all the numbers in the different positions. You'll recall that last year, there were 10 or 12 iterations of this, as we sort of moved through the budget. So, what we did is we asked Barbara Brown's team at the school to just review the 1415 column, and then after which, we sort of locked it and said, "Okay, this is where we are. Now, let's build this table out. Let's incorporate a column for 1516, and let's begins to run some theoreticals." So, really, everything from 2008, '09 to 1415 is sort of locked, as it were, because it's, either it's past or we're living it. And I would just draw your attention to that enrollment figure for next year, that 365. So, you know, we opened 372. We had budgeted at 360. It was a very healthy enrollment season over the summer. And that 365 figure ultimately has arrived at, if you look at the very back page, the very last enrollment notation reads migration of the grades. So, what we did is we literally assumed really very little trans latency in the grades, and we were just, for the purpose of this exercise, we're bumping everyone up a grade, matriculating. And then, bless you, we looked at 49 age-eligible kindergarteners for next year. So, we're taking the matriculation plus 49, plus a conservative, based on this past summer anyway, a conservative net migration figure for the summer of 11 to arrive at 365. So, that's sort of what we did this year in getting to the number of 360. We looked at migration, age-eligible kindergarten students, and then we looked at a net migration figure. And so, that net migration figure of 11 means all the ins and outs. We think the dust would settle with potentially 11. This year, we ended with, you know, north of 20, 21 or so students over this past summer. But it would probably not be too wise to necessarily build a budget around that. We think 11 is a conservative, safe number. What this kind of tells us is that, you know, we're running 19 class sections right now at Pine Hill. If we went from 372 and landed at 365, all things being held equal, we could have 19 sections, could have 19 sections next year. Or there's certainly fodder for discussion on all kinds of other things, for sure. But we thought it important to put this ball at play. It's an important document to look at and to consider in advance of the first draft of the budget in November. Mr. Garland?
People, some people talk about capacity at Pine Hill. But it doesn't seem like, if you say, "Well, if we have, instead of 365, we come in at 375," or something like that, it doesn't seem like there is capacity. But that, I guess I take that to mean we've got capacity where we could take more kids and not increase our costs too dramatically.
Taking kids, sure.
So, what is that? So, some people say that we've got capacity at Pine Hill. Doesn't that imply, or do you say that?
So, let's say theoretically that at the moment, seven more kids came into Pine Hill. Would we be asking for another teaching section or something? No, no. And certainly, Dr. Brown chiming as well.
This year is an excellent example. We've had, as recently as last week, two new students move in. Our net migration is plus 20 from June till now. So,
Grade levels.
Yeah.
Over all of, you know, spread across 19 sections.
It really depends on where they come in, right?
It depends on when they come in. And then, let's run your scenario. So, let's say the Sherborne School Committee were to contemplate school choice for a moment, and say, "Okay, there's an opportunity for school choice dollars to have students come in with," you know, there is the issue of what kinds of other resources students may theoretically place or tax. They could tax the system.
Sure.
Sure. So, I didn't know if that's where you were going in terms of capacity for just growth, meaning families moving into Sherborne, or potentially looking at a school choice platform.
No, I really wasn't thinking about school choice. I just think about people saying in general that we've got, there's capacity at Pine Hill. I mean, if you've got three sections of 17, you could add, it seems like you could add a number of kids in that grade and not have to add too much in a way of cost, it seems like. So, I guess I was trying, just I was trying to feel you out for saying this discussion about if it's 10 more kids, that that could be a budget issue.
Well, we were more trying to look at whether this schema of 19 sections is the new, something of the new normal for Pine Hill. So, right, we're always trying with both elementary schools to realize when are the, when are the larger classes matriculating into the middle school, and these seemingly smaller, not seemingly, these smaller kindergarten crops, you know, are coming into the school, and when, what defines the new normal for us, so that we don't continue to have the constriction that we've experienced over the past few, necessarily. So, it's not like we're looking at it going, "Okay, it's abundantly evident we're down two sections next year." Like, we're looking at Chicaring and knowing that it's a section or two next year at Chicaring. Little doubt, little doubt that the school will be down a couple of sections next year.
I think the part of it, though, is too, like, if you looked at, if it just so happened that eight kids wanted to join this year's third grade, you've already got 21 and 22 kids in the section. It could, if they happened to come in on one grade, then it would top the, really topple that grade to absolute maximum class size. So, I think that that's what it is, that because it's spread out over so many grades, yes, if you have three sections of 17, you could take some more. But other grades, they're 21, 22, and you really couldn't take, I mean, if a couple of kids moved in, they'd be fine. But if, you know, two houses of triplets moved in, you might.
Well, I think there's two aspects of capacity. One is the teaching staff capacity, and the other is the building capacity, how many classroom spaces that you had. And we've constricted over the last number of years to kind of keep these numbers kind of where they are. You know, if there was a huge influx, you know, with some of these building projects that are going on in Sherborne, should they suddenly, you know, start to build these houses and families move in, you know, would there still be capacity at Pine Hill School to manage that? And I think if you look at the numbers from our history of having 100 more students, that that would be possible. And I think that the superintendent has done some things to work with that physical capacity by renting some of those spaces out, who will take that into the collaborative, which is, you know, as opposed to them just sitting there doing nothing.
Right, I agree. Our footprint clearly allows, I mean, at one point, we were at 23 sections, 24 sections. So, there's little doubt it would involve some redefinition of real estate within the building, for sure, because we've been able to be creative in defining some instructional spaces to meet students' needs, and yet, and also rent some, that's all good stuff. But yes, I mean, if we were to have this huge influx and needed two more classrooms to go online next year, we'd probably have to have a discussion about, do we still rent two classrooms, or what do we do?
We expanded the preschool program over the years. I mean, there's many things that have happened since 2008, 2009 with those rooms.
I will share that the Dover School Committee will be contemplating starting an integrated pre-K program next year as well. There's most definitely a need, given the influx of pre-K students, and particularly pre-K students with some special needs at Chicaring. So, that's something that would be very wise for that school committee to consider, and they will, and they have the real estate to do it, obviously, in Chicaring, too. So... Which would be also a win for Sherborne, because that would allow us to be able to have some students who would like to come into our program, but who are on waiting lists, et cetera, to be able to, so it's a win, that's a win-win all around, to be able to meet more students' needs.
And then, you save the cost of having them out places.
Correct.
Brilliant, to bet.
Yep. Any other discussion on the two reports here?
Thank you.
Mrs. Hopple, to see what's happening.
Thank you. So, next, we have an expected donation?
So, we're not prepared yet, and that is to say that the check is not in hand yet. But certainly, there are some active discussions happening with a very generous family in Sherborne that's contemplating a fairly sizable donation to the school. And one of the things, when we met with the mom a couple of weeks ago, Dr. Brown and myself, we chatted about the possibility of creating an early childhood playground at Pine Hill, which would be really much needed and very cool to have on the campus, and would be widely used and completely ADA accessible, and all kinds of great things. And the family is very attracted to that idea. So, given the magnitude of that, I just know from a few years ago, when we did the Playground at Chicaring, that was a $70,000 project in the neighborhood. And that's probably in the ballpark of what we could be talking about here. And so, that's an opportunity that's of great interest to the family, that's not prepared to be named just yet. But the mom has asked that we have a couple companies come out and just kind of spec out the area and take a look. So, we have actually three companies scheduled to come out this Friday, just to literally put some thoughts together for us to bring back to the Pine Hill Capital Building Committee as a first stop on the train ride. And so, that, you'll see it as a placeholder on your fiscal 16 spreadsheet. If you look, it says Playground Updates, or something along the lines, placeholder $50,000, and then it's backed out of our ask. So, we've tried to be very transparent in saying, "This is something of interest to the family. It's not something that would be burdensome to the town of Sherborne, or to the school department in particular."
Be the back, the back playground?
Right.
It will be the smaller one near the gym, right?
Dr. Brown, no.
No. We call that the front playground out by the parking lot, and we have a back playground, if you exited our building, by the music room. That is minimalist in terms of its equipment.
Oh, I see. I thought you meant the one by the...
No, we currently refer to that as our preschool playground. What was interesting for me to learn recently in walking our property with a consultant to comp that opportunity for me. Our front playground is regulated for children about seven or eight and older. It's not considered developmentally appropriate or age spec for our pre-K, K, or even our first-grade students. So, the opportunity to go from a less minimalist, although the children do enjoy the acorns and the nature walking, watching back there, the rusty old swings. But we're thinking the back area of our school would be a great area. And then, schedule-wise, we could certainly maximize the different grade levels, playing on the different playgrounds, you know, in the lunch recess routines, so.
Okay. So, it's a little bit of the, you know, car before the horse, maybe, in the sense that, you know, the family needs to sort of know a number, but we have a Pine Hill Building Committee, but we kind of need to know if we're even in the realm of reality. I mean, so there's just, we felt it very important therefore to disclose tonight in a little more detail than we had shared, I think, last spring a little bit around this, that the family's quite serious, and also seeks to work with Dr. Brown and her team on a couple instructional opportunities in the school as well, particularly having to do with STEM initiatives. The parents are very interested in that field. So, it will be probably a playground and some pretty sizable investment in potentially engineering kits and things of that nature for the classrooms.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Ms. Sidman pulled out her wish list the second I mentioned.
Now, we know what Laurie Ryan was looking at on her phone. This month, we only have one item on our consent agenda, and that's the meeting minutes. Are there any suggestions, discussions, corrections on the minutes of September 16th?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for September 16, 2014.
Second.
Any discussion? Alls in favor? Okay, and then, just note the fact that you have the regional and the Chicaring minutes, which you can look at at your leisure. Next, we have items for November. Now, I imagine the first one of the budget you will have?
Yeah, we're going to work very hard on that. So, if it's okay, Miss, as we'd like to keep the agenda very thin in November, if that's possible, so that we're able to get that to committee members a little bit ahead of when you would obviously normally get your packet. We'll try for a few days, even if it's 48, 72 hours greater in terms of your readability of it. It's going to be, we're going to try to get on Dr. Brown's calendar real fast and book a couple of days to just work. So, that's what it will take to just hunker down and work on the budget, yeah. It'll be fun.
Okay, so that'll be the main thing, just any other catch-up things that come along, then that'd be great. Any other items, people? Someone want to move to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Alls in favor? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.